Good evening, everybody. Just looking for Warren, sorry. It is six o'clock. It is March fourteenth. Welcome to the town of Reinbeck Town Board Meeting. Would everybody like to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
To the Republic.
The Republic.
One nation.
Under God, indivisible, good liberty, justice.
For all. Thank you. Okay, we've got a packed house. Again, all non-Town Board meetings, please mute yourselves. Great. I have would like a motion for the approval of prior minutes to our February fourteenth and February twenty eighteen regular Town Board meeting. May I have a motion?
Have a motion.
Thank you, Ed. May I have a second?
Okay, I can.
Chauncey, thank you. Is there any discussion? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved unanimously. I have a couple of announcements. Dutchess County Household Waste Hat and Hazardous Waste and Electronic Recycling is happening at four twenty-nine. For more information, go to www.dutchessny.gov, Department of Solid Waste. We are continuing with our Community Choice Outreach. As you know, Community Choice is a buying consortium of energy from clean, non-fossil sources. It also has shown in this recent price crisis to insulate people somewhat from the skyrocketing costs. So we're opening it up to look at it again. We have posted the times of our outreach. I think they're included with this package and they will all be Zoom the week of March twenty-eighth, the week of April fourth, and the week of April twenty-fifth. We invite everybody to join us. We are actively looking for C A B and Citizens Review Committee members. Please go to the town website and fill out a what do you call it, Joan? Volunteer application form. Okay.
Is the citizen, is the citizen review about the comprehensive plan?
Citizens Review Committee for the Comprehensive Plan, yes. Sorry, bear with me one second. Got to stack the papers here. Warren, you're with us?
Yes, I'm here.
I think our first item tonight is a resolution twenty twenty-two zero seventy, Reformation of the Citizen Zoning and Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Is that Josh?
Yeah, and Alan.
Alan, you'll second it?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Josh, you take this one.
So we've had some back and forth with some members of the public about the structure of this, and there's two comments which we think are valid and don't really alter anything in the grand scheme of things that we'd like to propose as amendments from the floor. One is about just the fact that the Cornell Cooperative Extension will be involved and liaising with the group as part of our agreed-upon process for twenty twenty-two with them to help us understand best practices and move forward any current plan changes that we might see fit to do in the future. And the second piece is a statement about open meetings and the fact that these are open to the public will be announced on our website and available on Zoom or however the committee sees fit, and that this is in keeping with the general sense of inclusion, openness, and desire to have as much public input as possible.
Again, the, the purpose of this committee is to advise the Town Board on best practices for how to handle stress of growth in the community and our rural roads. And the second thing that we wanted to advise us on is how to incorporate the environment and sustainability issues. We have been chosen by Cornell Cooperative for twenty twenty-two to be one of the communities that they help. So this community is necessary to get the grant or the help from Cornell that we were promised. This we want to foster community participation and inclusion. We are we do not want to be Warren, what's the best way to say this? There's statutory necessities for a comprehensive plan committee that we do not feel that we're able to adhere to at this time. We don't have the money budgeted, we don't have staff, we are not, we are not, we are not in we're not starting a comprehensive plan review committee. We want a citizens advisory committee, and we want to be able to foster community engagement and participation within that structure. So we would ask, and Warren, you're going to need to help us with this, that the town clerk would notice all of these meetings and that they would be recorded on Zoom and that they would be a part of our, you know, put on our website for future reference. We do want community participation within the confines of a advisory group, not a comprehensive plan committee. So but before I toss it to Warren, let me talk to the board. Chauncey, what are your feelings about that?
First, I'd like to ask a question. Josh, when you were addressing this point, I think you you used a phrase, a phrase, something like, as the committee wishes, or something like that. And my, my question relating to that is if a portion of the committee wishes to meet some evening in somebody's home and have a cup of coffee or glass of wine and talk about one of the issues, will they be allowed to do that? Or is the idea that every single meeting of any kind and every word that these people say to each other needs to be permanently recorded? And or is it something in between?
Well, I'm sorry, was that addressed?
Well, I addressed it to Josh because
Okay, go ahead, Josh.
I, I think it's something in between. I mean, in our discussions with, about this before, the idea that it was open to this group to decide whether it was in public or not is their discretion. So to me, I, I think, subject to their decision-making, that they would do it in a, you know, town hall or on Zoom, et cetera, but I don't know about that nuance. I think the, the feedback that we got was basically that, is this a closed group or not? And it's not. So I think that's just sort of the nature or the background of why we want to include this piece.
Well, if the, if the committee can decide, which I believe you just indicated, that the meeting shall or shall not be recorded, shall or shall not be formal. I don't even know if we're going to require that they have a quorum, which is not, I think, irrelevant, although Warren can correct me. Excuse me a moment, Elizabeth. Then I'm okay with it. The committee can make a decision as it goes along. Then I'm okay.
Okay. Again, I want to say this is an advisory committee, not a board, so they will not be required to adhere to open meetings law. We have said that we would would like to, you know, Warren has to help us with this, notice the public of any meetings. But certainly, I don't think we would notice if two committee members get together and, and talk about this. And the other thing is that this would be at the direction of the chair or the co-chairs. We don't want to run this committee. We don't want to micromanage it. We want the chairs to set the methodology and the inclusive tone for it. And we want them to engage with the community and come back to us with some recommendations while working with Cornell and our highway superintendent on rural roads. So it's a big charge. So I think what I heard, Chauncey, is that, given all that, you're fine with it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Run it the way it wants to run it. I'm pleased. And and maybe you ought to refer back, Elizabeth, to what you said at the Valentine's Day meeting about what, how we will deal with whatever comes to us from this committee.
I don't remember what I said.
You talked about the fact that we won't do a bloody thing without plenty of notice and meaning for the public.
Anything that the committee brings to us will then become a part of a local law process, and we're required to notice meetings. Hold on, Linda, we're not, I'll come to you. Notice meetings and take public comment on any local law. So we have a different standard than an advisory committee. Alan, what's your feeling on this?
Yeah, I mean, that's exactly, that's exactly where I'm at. If anything's going to happen, it's going to happen with the Town Board. We're the only ones that can change the law. And when we change the law, it's subject to open meeting law and subject to all the notices and process. So I don't have a problem with having the committee operate any way it does.
All right, but you, and you're okay with us amending this resolution to say that the town clerk will notice all meetings per the chair or the co-chairs of this committee to foster public engagement and participation?
Absolutely.
Ed?
I feel the same way.
Josh?
I'm, I'm good with that.
Warren, can you help us?
Yeah, I, I don't want to do it on the fly. I, I, let me, I mean, I revised it once today. I
We would like to do it on the fly because we would like to pass it tonight. Our time with Cornell is ticking. And if we don't do it
So I don't, I don't, the Cornell Cooperative is something new, so I don't have any language in there about that, so.
The only language we need is that this committee will be interacting and working with the Cornell Cooperative Reinbeck Project. And Cornell, Josh, help me with the language here. They've agreed to
Yeah, it's, I think it's with Michelle Gluck, who is our representative for Cornell.
I'm not sure we need any language at all. They can talk to anybody they want to. Cornell, or Harvard, or Yale, or Stanford.
We would like
Well,
assign, Cornell has asked for a committee to work with, so we want to make
I see. Okay. I see.
Okay, so, so why don't we, I mean, if you want to do it tonight, I prefer to
No, we would like to
Just redo it, but so we can, we can, we can add to the resolution on the second page at the top that the committee shall also work with the Cornell Cooperative Extension. What is it? What, what section of Cornell Cooperative Extension are we working with?
It's, it's their, it's their twenty twenty-two Comprehensive Review Project, Comprehensive Plan Review Project.
Okay, so they'll be working with the Cornell Cooperative Extension twenty twenty-two Comprehensive Plan. What is it?
Review, review, review.
Review. So we can add that to the top paragraph.
Joan, create another result for that, please. Make that the third resolved after the Town Board hereby creates a citizens advisory committee, and then we'll have a third
Okay.
resolve that says what Warren just said.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we have in there what Cornell wants us to have in there. So is it possible that you can just send me the information from Cornell in terms of what they want in terms of
Warren, it's not that, it's not that formal, that this committee will be interfacing with the Cornell Cooperative Extension for, Josh, finish the language.
Twenty twenty-two Comprehensive Plan Review Project.
You know, let, let me take this again. Do you guys want to table this and write it again? Linda, I see your hand up.
You don't have to.
You know, we could call a special meeting in a few days and do it then.
Yeah.
Waiting for the next regular meeting.
Is that our clerk?
I'd rather redo the, the resolution. I mean, this is the fourth time I've done this resolution. I'd rather have it the, the language exactly right. I, I understand what you want to do.
Let's continue, let's continue discussing then.
Okay, so let, let me give you my other suggestions. The main thing that I wanted to put in there was the paragraph about it not being a a comprehensive Plan Committee Board under two seventy-two of the A of the town law, which we have in there. We can add where it says, this is the next to last resolution resolved on the second page. A resolve that the, it is the intention of the Town Board, this committee shall not be deemed a public body as that term is defined by the New York State Open Meetings Law, Section one oh two-two, and that as such, the committee shall not be subject to the strict requirements of the open meeting law and conduct of its meetings, and be a further resolve, notwithstanding that fact, the committee and its members may, shall, conduct its meetings in open session with the right of the public to attend and observe such meetings, and that the town clerk will assist in posting notice of said meetings on the town's website.
At direction of the committee chair or chairs.
Okay. And I think that should do it. Are you going to have the committee members appoint their own chairperson, or do you want to appoint the chair?
We will be appointing the chairs.
For the Town Board, so we, we have that in there. That's left in it. So I think that should do it. I just wanted to, before you, why don't you vote on it and I'll tweak the language.
One, one other thing that we touched upon earlier today, I just want to make sure everybody on the, the board is aware of it as well as the, the public, is the, the change with regard to
I thought we were going to call a special meeting for this and get a clean copy, no?
I'll send you a clean copy tomorrow morning. I, I'm just going to be, I'm going to be out of town. Well, I can
Warren, with, with this many people involved, I don't think I'm comfortable if we, we don't have it all set.
Yeah, so let me, let me redo it and I'll have it out for you tomorrow with these changes. And, and if you could send me the Cornell Cooperative, I want to make sure I get that
As soon as I get off.
Interaction, correct. Okay. And I'll have the resolution for you tomorrow.
Well,
but let me finish. And then you can vote on it whenever you want.
Well, I think we'll set a meeting at this meeting, and I think we should set a meeting for three o'clock on Thursday.
That's fine with me.
Well, isn't that a
We will, yes, but we'll start with a Town Board meeting and then we can go
Oh, I see, okay.
I know that we're all available.
Yep, good idea.
So Thursday, three P M, special Town Board meeting for just this
Okay.
And that's on the seventeenth, folks.
Thursday, the seventeenth at three P M. Now, let me take a couple of questions. Linda, you have your hand up?
Thank you. Um, so I'm encouraged, you know, that, that, that these edits and changes are being made, so it's inclusive. The only thing that I would, I would ask is, Warren, the last phrase that you added, which is that the meetings would be open to the public by, you know, at the direction of, of the co-chairs. I don't think you need that. I think it simply should be open to the public. I think that's the gist of what Elizabeth and Josh was, were talking about. And I would also think it's, you know, suggest that it's, it would be, and maybe this is, you know, something that would just happen, but I, I just want to raise the issue, which is that on the Town Board website, that there's a dropdown for this committee so that in addition to the, the meetings, you know, being listed, that it's an, there'll be an opportunity for, you know, reports from whether it's Cornell or other agencies or groups that the, the committee is able to wrangle to help review, as, as Elizabeth said, the environmental sustainability, rural roads, and obviously, you know, any other tangential related things that those issues bring us to. I think that would be incredibly helpful, and I think it would address, you know, just the interest of the Reinbeck citizen community to have access and to read things and to contribute.
Joan, is that possible? Our clerk is saying, yes, we can do a dropdown for the committee.
On Linda's first point, if we take out the language with regard to the direction of the chairs, doesn't that deprive the committee of the flexibility that we've been talking about since?
I think it does. I think it should stay in because then we'll be, then the, then it's sort of, it's, it's sort of tacit that we would be controlling, and we don't want to control it. We want the committee to advise us.
No, I don't, I don't, I don't have that. I don't, excuse me, let me finish. I, I don't have that. What I put in there is that notwithstanding this fact, the committee and its members shall conduct its meetings in open session with the right of the public to attend and observe such meeting. It doesn't say, I'm not putting anything in there about the
There was land, there was language as directed by the chair or chairs, I think. At least that's been
Which, which paragraph are we talking about?
The last paragraph on the second page.
The last resolved?
Yeah.
Well, that's I'm going by, I don't know what I'm going by. I don't have that. I mean, I
Because I, I just penciled it in.
Warren, you're going by something that you revised today that we were going to, this is not what the public has been noticed. We were going to make two motions from the floor, and that's what you're going by. So can you read the resolve that you're talking about?
Now you're confusing me.
Can I just help clarify?
No, 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 thanks. Warren, we noticed the public last Wednesday. You have revised it since last Wednesday.
Right, but I'm further revising it after you and I had a discussion this afternoon, so I made some notes about some revisions, which I, I prefer to just redo the resolution, and you can vote on it Thursday. Let's, let's do it that.
With, with taking that point into consideration, Linda, we feel that this should be at the discretion of the chairs.
Okay. I, I just want, I just want to make sure I have it right, and I want to see the Cornell Cooperative language as to what we're, how we're interfacing with Cornell. So I'll put it off to Thursday. I'll have a finished product for you on Thursday, and hopefully you'll vote on it. We'll get this done on Thursday.
I'm going to continue to take questions. Warren, I know that you may want to leave soon. Is everyone
Well, if it's relating to this, I'll stay for a few more minutes.
Okay, it's relating to this. Joanne and David Gill.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm a little confused talking about this committee being open to the public, but at the discretion of them deciding not to open it to the public. And if this is a committee to gather information from residents and, and, and people in the town, why, why are you not allowing anybody to come and speak at them?
Okay, we're going to go through this one more time, and I'm going to have Warren explain it. You weren't here at the last meeting, Joanne, I think, but there is statutory requirements for a comprehensive plan committee, and we do not want a comprehensive plan committee. We feel that it's too stringent. We spent two and a half million dollars on the comprehensive plan, and we want a citizens advisory group to help us with two issues. Warren, you, you take it from, from
Yeah, I mean, I, I, if, if, if the board wants to have other, you know, if the committee wants to have people attend the meetings and address the, the committee, that's, that's fine with me. We just don't want to make that a mandate. So we'll, we'll, we'll tweak the language appropriately so that'll be open to the public, and the committee in its discretion can, can hear from other members of the public or other agencies in, in, in performing their advisory functions.
Okay, and, and I thought I heard at this meeting stating that the advisory committee was to gather information from the town and the people in the town. So I, I don't quite know. What is
The advisory committee is going to work with the Cornell Cooperative, who has chosen the town of Reinbeck for twenty twenty-two to be one of their towns that they help revise their comprehensive plan to include sustainability and environmental best practices. Of course, we want the public to participate, but this isn't a committee that's going out to reinvent the wheel. This is a committee that's going to help gather information by public participation and under the guidance of Cornell.
The point I didn't quite get, how they're going to get the public participation.
That's We'll notice the meetings and the public will show up like they're showing up tonight, hopefully.
That, that'll be up to the committee how they want to interface with the public.
Right.
Jeff Christensen?
Hi, thank you. Thank you, Elizabeth. So just kind of on that topic, the thing that, the thing that raised my interest was the statement that the committees would be available for the public to attend and observe, which kind of eliminates the possibility of public input at the meetings. If, so will the public be able to speak and comment at the meetings? And if not, what vehicle will there be for the public to provide input to this advisory committee?
That's a good question. I guess we could leave that up to the committee to come up with best practices, you know, with, with how they want to handle it. Ultimately, you could always address the Town Board in an open session or through a letter, and we could post all that. We're trying to come up with a way that allows for the most public participation without us having to have the I don't know how to say this, having the, the strict requirements of a comprehensive plan committee.
Yeah, I, I understand that, and that's why you've gone with this advisory committee. I think I understood. My, my only point is the, the public input should be kind of early in the, would be, the cart would be the horse before the cart. Wouldn't want to see us get to the point where the, by the time that the public was allowed to have any input, if at all, it was only at the meeting where everything is being approved. I mean, that the, basically, that kind of discussion should be happening, and the juices should be flowing with the public so that the advisory committee takes that input and resolves recommendations from the public input in order to present them to the, to the town.
Well, I agree, and I also don't think that necessarily all of the, I mean, we're always open for public. Warren, what's your suggestion?
I get that, I get that, but just, but just my, my only concern that I wanted to point out was, yeah, the, the only point I wanted to point out was, was the statement that the public can attend and observe, and that, and that verbiage basically excludes the, the possibility of public input. So I, I, I would like
No, 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 excuse me, that's not what, that's why I don't want, I want to put the resolution in final form, and I just added that tonight. So what, what I had added is that the committee and its members shall conduct the meetings in open session with the right of the public to attend and observe the meetings. If the committee in, in performing its advisory committee functions wants to interface with the public and have the public attend and wants to take input from the public, that's up to the committee. We, we can't dictate in one resolution how, how this committee handles each and every one of the, these meetings. I think it'll probably be a, an evolutionary process as they chew into what their, their functions are and how they're going to conduct this. But if you're going to have, I, I don't want to mandate to the committee in what respect the, the public will, will attend these meetings. We want the committee to do their job unfettered by public participation and make recommendations to the Town Board. At the appropriate time, the Town Board will take those recommendations and input, and will start a, if they want, if the Town Board wants to amend its local law, or even if it's a comprehensive plan that we can amend that without going through an entire comprehensive review board, we would then have public hearings and input from the public. But advisory committees do, are not usually formed where members of the public come to the committees, address the committees, and and, and, and public comment and given, take is taken. In that sense, it's usually the function of the committees to work among the committee members itself in working through their projects and their mandates. If we have public coming to every meeting, I mean,
Yeah, I, I, I work on, I work on, I've, I've worked on them before, and I appreciate the points you're making, Warren, but I would say that although, although you say you don't want to mandate to this advisory council how they do it, I would say that you should mandate to this council that there must be a mechanism for the advisory committee to take public input, whether it's in the meetings or not, whether they want to schedule public hearings or not. But if we end up with a case where there's six people on a committee and they don't speak to anyone else but themselves and, and make six people's opinions, recommendations to the town, then we failed.
Okay, noted. Your comments are noted.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, that would certainly be taken into account.
Yeah, I mean, that would certainly be taken into account by the town board.
And that's not what he's talking about. He's very, I heard you, Jeff. You're specifically talking about. A mechanism for the county to take the the committee to take comment.
Yes.
And yeah, and want noted. Thank you. Kara?
Thank you. Yes, that 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 answered uh, one of my questions. I think another another uh, question I had was. How on what basis are the committee members going to be chosen? And is there a way? For the public to participate in that process?
Uh, the town board uh, at our discretion can name people to committees. Um, anyone who wants to participate should fill out an application. And I know what I'd be looking for, but I can't speak for the other town board members. I would be looking for someone who is a a resident of the town. Uh, probably I would want. More outside village residents and village residents, and I would want a broad. I would want a committee with a broad knowledge. I would like somebody who's interested in, you know. Whatever the boxes are, somebody who's a a. A gardener or an arborist, somebody who is a hiker or a mushroom collector, somebody who is a water expert, somebody who. Et et cetera. I would be looking for passion and experience. I don't know what everybody else would be looking for. Thank you.
I add that. I'd want to see, I mean, it's impossible to define, but I'd want to see all possible points of view represented on the committee.
Okay.
Broad, a broad, a broad array of experience views.
Okay. And then just one, one quick follow on question. So in addition to the work on sustainability with the Cornell extension. It that are roads part of that or are roads an additional area of interest for the town?
Given that this committee two charges, one is to um. Look at the lack of. Environmental. When this. Comprehensive plan was written twelve years ago, we weren't where we are now. We weren't talking about the environment and sustainability, and we recognize. That that's lacking from our comprehensive plan. Cornell has offered to help us with this. So we want the committee to look at that. And the other charge is to look at the stress of development. Or than the change of our community on our rural roads. Now, there's only so much we can do with roads. Our highway superintendent is here. Um, because uh, you know, the state dictates a lot, but we'd want Bob, I'm hoping you'll serve on this committee in that aspect, Bob Wyant. Um, those are the two charges for now. It doesn't mean that the charges can't be broadened, but that's where we want to start.
And are the are given, given that that is a look at the impact of development on the roads, does this impact? Development proposals. On the table at the moment and. Whether or not they will be be uh, held up.
We're not going to be looking at changing any uh, we ju- we call that up zoning or down zoning, Warren. We we did that. Majorly twelve years ago. I don't think that's on the table.
Yeah, I I think it's called up zoning. You mean when you increase the.
We increased all of the zoning twelve years ago, three acre. We 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 went, you know, we have a twenty acre, ten acre and a five acre. I I don't. Think that that's on the table right now.
No.
No, it was just it was just about developments that were potential would, you know, development that will impact the roads, whether or not they are.
No, it's more Kara that the change and growth within our community and that impact on our rural roads.
Yep.
How do we, how do we keep our rural roads rural? You know, people can't even bike on them anymore, you know. So what do we do about that? David? Hello?
I'm sorry, I I wasn't unmuted. Hi.
Hi.
Really great to see these uh, changes that you've made to uh, respond to concerns of the public. I I just uh. Want to make and and in the previous comments, I certainly agree with all of them and have those concerns. I just want to make sure. That we are saying that we are not leaving it up to the chairs to decide how public these meetings are.
These meetings need public participation, and we are going to charge the committee with figuring out how to do that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, Julie Zito, is it Zito or Zito?
Zito.
Hi.
Hi. Um, I have a quick question that relates to the full range of socioeconomic classes. Who are members of of the town and and village of I'm of of Reinbeck. Um. Sometimes we don't look like each other. There are individuals who could serve in a public capacity. But have very limited uh, economic status. And um, I'm very, very interested in seeing that evolve. It's not a one minute deal. It won't be fixed right away. But um, it's extremely important for us uh, to consider the. Um, the sensibilities and and abilities of all our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you for that. That's um, very kind and and true. Uh, Victor.
Hi, I just wanted to ask if there was going to be an availability for the the new document that Warren is drafting so that it could be read prior to voting on it.
We're going to get it at Warren. Are you going to have it to us tomorrow?
To tomorrow, Wednesday.
All right, you know, we we wanted to move this along so that we're not. Messing around. We so we're Cornell is on the clock and we're not, but I'm also, I want to make sure that I I don't want to. Force this. Um, I'd like to get it done. Um, we'll get it out as soon as we can. I don't want to, you know. I don't want people not to be comfortable with it. Our objective to setting the meeting is that, you know. We had, uh, I know the board is available. We have to meet with our attorney over a uh, attorney client issue, so I could call it quickly. If we need more time, we could have more time. Warren's saying he'll get it to us tomorrow. That means we'll get it out to you tomorrow, end of day.
It'll be on the town website.
Joan, where are you, Joanie? Joan is nodding yes. Joan will have it on the town website about two minutes after Warren gets it to her.
Oh, I'm I'm.
No, no, two minutes after we've all read it.
Yeah, I'm not gonna, yeah.
Maybe we're, maybe we're rushing this with Thursday.
Yeah, I it it's up to you. I can have a redraft for you by Wednesday. Um, how you want to disseminate this to the public and and have the public view it before you vote on it. Is up to you, but I I'm not, I have.
Okay, hold got it. So hold, hold, hold on. Um, Cha- I know Chauncey, um, and I I I got you, Gaff. Um, you're going to need time to go over this, remove all the periods, change words. And talk to Warren. So I'm thinking Thursday.
No infinitives, by gosh.
I'm thinking Thursday is rushing it. So I'm thinking we should set. A meeting. What what is today? Today's Monday. Maybe we should do it next Monday.
You you can. I I won't be here next.
You know, we we hopefully we won't need you, but.
Hopefully. We can only hope.
I mean, I don't know. You guys want it. Does Monday seem more comfortable?
Yeah, I think, yeah, let let let's do this. Let me re, I I let me rework this thing now that I've gotten more input and more information. I'll have it for the town board for Thursday. How you want to go about having the public see it uh, before you vote on a on on that is is going to be up to the board.
All right, guys, um, I would like to check your availability for a town board meeting on Monday, then a special town board meeting. On Monday, the twenty first at. I don't know, is five P M. Good?
Sure, available.
Yes.
Does that, Jo- Joan, would you rather have earlier? Because you're happy staying in town hall until eleven o'clock every night. Um. Um, let's do, let's do five o'clock on, we're canceling, we're we're not, we're canceling the three P M. On Thursday. The seventeenth, and we're noticing this for five P M. On Monday, the twenty first. Uh, does that work for you, Alan? Alan Shear. You're on muted. You're you're, oh, yeah, that's good. Okay, is that good for you, Ed?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, and Chauncey, that works too?
Yes.
And Josh?
It's fine.
Okay, and I know Joan's good. So Warren, all right, so let's uh, Victor, does that help?
Yes, thank you.
Sure. Um, Linda Christensen. Got to unmute yourself. Got to unmute yourself.
There we go. I think.
Hi.
Okay, hi, sorry. Um, I just, I I caught part of a conversation earlier about the interaction of the. Uh, advisory board members cat, you know, casual interactions, possibly meeting at people's homes. Uh, or whatever. Um, and I just wanted to understand the limitations of their meeting with board members. In a scenario like that.
We cannot work, uh, uh, the board can't work unless we're at a publicly noticed meeting.
Yeah, they they that they're not going to meet. I'm sorry to interrupt, but they're they're not going to meet at each other's homes. They're going to meet on a. A designated basis. They'll be calling meetings. It'll be noticed by the uh, uh, by the town clerk, and they'll be open to the public. Uh, again, I I I'm seeing this as evolving into something where the committee, and it's not a board, it's a committee. Has the discretion to uh, interface with the public and take public comments. In their discretion. That's that's something that the that the committee will will have the discretion to do if they like. If they do that, there was, you know, they have to be public sessions that are open to the public. And we're going to want minutes taking of of those interactions. Uh, well, it'll be minutes of their meetings anyway. They're going to have to, you know, they they have to keep minutes of their meeting. So and 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 nothing is going to happen, you know, at Brett alone or somebody's house. It's going to be. Somewhat formalized.
Okay, thank you. And don't forget, Linda, the town board is the legislative body. So any in for any recommendations that they bring forward will come to us. And go full through a full legal public review. Great, thank you. Anybody else? Bill, I know you have your hand up, but you're, is this a press question?
It's a clarification question.
Okay.
Um, I think if I understood Warren correctly, um, it it resolved the issue of whether. This is going to be subject to open meetings law. Uh, in terms of whether they meet or not. But Elizabeth, I just want to make sure I understand something from you. Um. The idea that because somebody shows up and is able to observe, do you consider that to be participation?
You're asking me specifically?
Well, that's you. You would seem to indicate the question was posed to you before. Um.
I think participation means having your um. Opinions registered in a public way.
Okay, so simply being able to show up and observe is not participation?
No, that's not participation. And 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 the committee has to have. The freedom to to allow participation if it feels it's necessary to perform their their designated functions as an advisory committee. So I I think we can't mandate um, exactly how they're going to fulfill their function. Uh, that that will evolve and and they'll set their own rules and regulations and protocol for for their meetings. Uh, there's just so much that the town board can dictate to this committee on how they operate.
And and then the other thing is, if this is uh, Cornell is sort of requiring. To participate with a committee, does that make this committee necessary and essential?
I I don't know. I have to, I have to see the man, what what Cornell's involved. I I wasn't aware that. This committee was supposed to interact with Cornell Cooperative. So I can't answer that question tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Um, again, it's our intention to have public participation. Again, we want it. We want to hear what people say. We are always open and here for you. We want this committee to follow that without us having to mandate it through the confines of a comprehensive plan review committee.
Committee board, they're actually called a board.
Board, right. So we're keeping it as a citizens review committee. Any town board members have any other questions or comments?
No.
Okay, Warren, thank you for this.
Okay, I'm going to um, take off unless you have something else, so.
I think we're okay. I think we're, I think we're okay from here.
All right. See you later.
Okay, uh, resolution twenty twenty-two oh eighty-five, hiring a summer camp director and assistant camp director. That was a a motion from Alan. May I have a second?
Second.
Second.
I'll take chance. Thank you. Is there any discussion or any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Um. Item three, resolution twenty twenty-two oh eighty-six, revise regulations for natural burial ground grave markers. May I have a motion? Thank you, Ed. May I have a second?
Again.
Thank you, Alan. Is there any discussion or any question? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you. Any motion for uh? Resolution twenty twenty-two oh eighty-seven.
Motion.
Uh, thank you, Joshua. I think Alan, you're very muffled. I'll take Alan as the second.
Yeah.
Who put this on the agenda?
I think. I didn't.
I didn't either.
Okay, I know nothing about this software. I don't know how our maintenance department that don't use computers are going to interface. I motion to table unless somebody can uh, fill me in on something.
Second motion, and and we should be sure that the services agreement that is attached to the resolution is reviewed by Alan and Warren both.
I just, our maintenance department don't use computers, so this seems a little um. I just table it. I I I don't.
Talk to Bob about this. I mean, the person that would use it is uh, is Bobby Fitzpatrick.
Bobby doesn't use a computer.
I understand.
Okay.
The software might be for Joan at the highway because she.
All right, well, there, let's, why don't you guys look into it and then come back? Let's see what, I don't even know what the software does, and I I don't know how it got on the agenda, so. All right, taking. Thank you. Um. Twenty twenty-two zero eighty-eight, uh, rescinding resolution twenty twenty, bless you, twenty twenty-one one eighty-six employee requirements of COVID nineteen vaccination or weekly testing. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Ed. May I have a second?
Again.
Second.
Thanks, Alan. Is there any discussion or any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Um. Resolution twenty twenty-two oh eighty-nine, H pack social media support. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you. I have a second.
Second.
Thanks, Chance. Any discussion or any questions?
This is part of their budget for this year, right?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Um, well, any other questions or all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Movements unanimously. Um, great. Um. Twenty twenty-two oh ninety preliminary accounts payable abstracts. I will make a motion. May I have a second?
Again.
I'll I'll take Chauncey. Uh, okay, um, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Is there any new business before the town board? Okay. Um, we have in here our tax collector progress report. Thank you, tax collector, also known as uh, town clerk Joan Winnie. It's there for the public just to see uh, how much process we've made, whether you know it or not. Uh, January, February, very busy months at town hall, and we've gotten about, what? Eighty percent of the taxes in, so, oh, well done, Joan. Thank you. Um, this is a sort of new thing that we're we're putting out. Yeah, eighty-one percent collected. Um, the next thing, Josh, you're gonna have to help me with this because I think you did
Oh, boy.
It's bus patrol. Um. Bus patrol is this weird thing that is a privatized sort of um. Um. How how do you explain it, Josh?
Basically, it's an outsourced technology that exists and is deployed in school buses that will sense when someone violates the passing of a school bus when it is in a stop position. So obviously, it's a terrible thing, but it's hard to catch people because there aren't cops everywhere. So these people have developed a software that takes a picture of their plate, sends them a violation, collects their money, and acts as an in-between, uh, between the court system and the violator. Um, so the 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 part about, the part about it where it gets murky is that basically Hyde Park School District has opted into this, I believe Red Hook as well. And so where those school districts have small overlaps with Reinbeck, Primrose Hill, whatever, South Cross, whatever the one or two roads are where their school district overlaps are town, there's the off-chance that there's a ticket that will be issued and that we would receive, our courts would receive the issue, uh, and we might receive 10% on whatever is caught uh, from this person. It's just really strange because we haven't opted into it, but by default, we may be sucked into it. Uh, it's this private group, and they basically act as the as the holding company for this entire process, opposed to it being adjudicated through a court process. The other weird thing I've heard from lawyers is that there's no one, you can't, you can't cross-examine a piece of paper. So there's like a whole due process component of this, which is an enigma too. So at the moment, it it appears we may have been by default opted into this, but we haven't formally engaged into it.
No, we're not, we have to opt into it. We are not opted in by default.
You might be, yeah, you might be ahead of me on that part.
No, unless we opt in, Hyde Park and Red Hook do not get to collect any of this privatized ticketing on their routes within our town. And I think we should hold, I I just don't, I I think we should talk to Albert Cousins. I think we should talk to our prosecutor. I don't like the whole idea of privatized, um, you know, electronic monitoring. That's just me.
That's pretty weird.
Okay, any input from anyone else?
I agree with you. I do too, yeah.
So we'll just not opt in for the time being. Okay, ARPA. I put out a little white paper of what we've been doing with ARPA since we were um, sort of informed that we were going to get money, uh, almost, um, 11 months ago. Um, and I'm public has been noticed on it, um, and what we're discussing doing is renovating town hall to include more office space upstairs in the big room. Um, so it would be a renovation of the big room. Anybody has any other ideas? We published all the documents. Take a look at it and let us know what you think. Um, I would like a motion to go into executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular person, and I would like to invite our highway superintendent in with us.
So moved.
Thanks. We'll be back. Jess, could you, do you know how to set up the room? For an executive session? Okay, there we go. We'll be back.
Hey, hey, Joan, I got a joint breakout room. I don't think that's was intended for me. Am I correct?
You are correct. Um, you guys want to take that off somewhere?
But if I change my name and and like my screen, you think anybody'd notice?
They might. They're pretty
I got it too, Joan.
Okay.
Likewise.
Yeah, but I don't think they'll mind if you guys go in. I know they wouldn't want me there.
Actually, I kind of think that they went into a secure session because they didn't want to.
I I I can go in and tell them that
No. No, 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 no. Don't tell the town board anything more than they already need to know.
The rent's too damn high.
Um. Yeah, there there's a phrase that I learned years and years ago. Thou shall extend no meeting beyond its God-given length.
So you didn't work at IBM. Um.
Yeah, home, home of the geek, land of the pocket protector.
That was last millennium.
Um, never mind. I I think I said enough.
Hey, Joan, I I have a question. Um, maybe I don't know where to look. But are the town board meeting minutes posted for 2022?
You're muted.
Details. Okay, here I am. Hi there, Roger. Um, as you know, we've we've been going through some transition. So things are a little behind the eight world, doing the best I can to get them up there as I can. There are only three, two sets, um, before tonight that have been approved. Um, and obviously tonight they've approved two additional sets. So hopefully by the end of the week, they should all be there.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Hey, we're back.
Okay. Um, anything else?
I just, John, um, is there anything you want to follow up based on your email with the ARPA stuff? There's something you'd like to say about that?
Do, I do. Hi, Josh. Thank you.
How are you?
I know. Good, good. I I I for some reason, I wasn't able to raise my hand when Elizabeth was touching on the the subject before, so um, I I appreciate it. Uh, listen, um, number one, I'm really happy that the the board decided to put this on the agenda, uh, and I'm appreciative that it appeared as an article last week in New York Times and very much appreciated a legislator, Connie's comments, uh, supporting, well, I'm not, I'm sorry, not supporting the funding for the $12 million to the baseball park, but but rightly saying, hey, wait a minute, county executive, there are other things these funds could be going to. And, um, and and I'm assuming that everyone on the call at this moment is familiar with the New York Times article last week. If not, it's a great read, and it focuses on what the supervisor just brought up, the op funds, these federal funds, um, roughly 536 for the town, doing a little over a quarter of a million for the village. And what's remarkable to me is that unlike a grant, there's such a broad scope of opportunities where we can be spending these funds. And that was, by the way, the point of, uh, of legislator Connie, that we we should be looking at what are other priorities. Twelve million, is that, you know, it's not binary. It's like $12 million or nothing. Uh, for a ballpark, it's $12 million that could be spent elsewhere. So we don't have $12 million, but you know, we have over half a million dollars, and that's not insignificant. And by my count, if you look at the, um, compliance or reporting guidelines that the Treasury has put out, there's over eighty, eighty areas that these funds could be spent.
We're happy to take, we've been talking about, I'm gonna cut you short a little bit here. We are happy to take suggestions. We have been publicly talking about this while we've been untangling a really difficult process because they've changed it four times. So if you want to let us know what ideas you have, we're happy to listen to it.
Well, I I think it just should be John Rossi's ideas. It should be commitments or ideas from everybody in the
Uh, John, we've been talking about this publicly for 11 months. We've had it noticed at meetings. We've had it in our budget letter. We're always happy to hear ideas.
Well, I I I I do appreciate the white paper that was put up uh, about all the efforts of 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 op and the town. And I know that there were actually a total of 12 different meetings that were referenced in that white paper. The supervisor, I went and I looked at every one of the agendas, and it was, it wasn't a single agenda. It was alerting the community that this was going to be discussed. So it's it's great that it was discussed, but it would be more meaningful if people knew in advance
Know that. Thank you very much. And any ideas you have would be great.
Well, here's an idea, just as we had a wonderful discussion
We would like to take, we'll take ideas in writing. That'd be fantastic.
Well, may I just finish this one point? Would it be possible for the board to conduct a a special meeting to invite the community in to discuss more fully? Because I'm not sure that everyone understands
We'll notice it. We'll notice it for a regular meeting, and like I said, we're always open to suggestions. You have to remember, though, we don't have a Department of Health. We don't have a Department of Housing. We don't have administrative infrastructure to oversee a lot of things that the county does.
No, understood. Of course, of course.
So within our purview, what do we spend money on? Where we're lacking funds is general fund money. We have tons of of which you may not be uh, you know, acquainted with because it's not, a village doesn't have this issue. We need funds for general fund items. Our town hall is riddled with asbestos. We have six departments in the basement. We've always wanted to do this. This is what we're thinking. If the public wants to come up with other ideas, I will put it on the next couple of town board meetings, and we'll take written comments.
I I think that would be wonderful. I appreciate that because after all, that we have until December 31st, 2024. Well, the two and a half years before we have to use these
We'll be deciding way before that.
But that would be, that that makes sense too, as long as there's an opportunity for some but my point is that we we don't have the clock against us. We have, don't have to rush into this.
We we we, there's no rushing. We've been talking about it for a year.
Even on tonight's agenda.
Yes, there you go. So, um, you know, I put out a letter about this with my budget. Um, we talked about it in every budget meeting. Noticing the public is noticing a meeting, and the public has to show up, John, just like you're doing tonight. So thank you. Josh, do you have anything else to add?
No, I think it sounds good. We'll talk about it more.
Yeah, if you have any ideas, we're happy to take them. But paramount to us, and we are the overseers of the town's money, is to give healthy air quality and workspace to our employees. We actually had to keep employees at home because we have about 10 people working in a basement without windows. Is that a way to work? Have you seen our downstairs in town hall?
To be, to be, to be clear, I'm not suggesting it's a bad idea. I don't know how it real, how it compares to the other opportunities out there. Uh, again, you know, the material that's available from the Department of Treasury, uh, these funds could potentially be used to help citizens who are having difficulty paying everything from their utility bills.
How do we administer that, John? We have no infrastructure for that. That's beyond our purview.
Well, you could look, we we could consider what other municipalities are doing.
You know what? This is why we're elected, to decide how to use the funds. If you have ideas, we're happy to take a written comment, but I see where you're going with this, and I don't know. It's it's, anybody else have any comments? Town board members?
Well, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Absolutely. We're always here.
And I hope there'll be other opportunities for all the community to get more familiar with this, with the board, and and talk about what the other options might be.
We've been talking about it for a year, so thanks for showing up tonight. Anybody?
Thank you.
Any other public comment or questions or? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Good night, everybody. Thank you for joining us. We'll see you on Monday at our special town board meeting at 5:00 PM.
Thanks.